All right, six thirty, I'm involved in Joshua City Council's order, we'll start out with the work session followed by the regular meeting. The council chambers one on one, South Main, Joshua, Texas, this is an open meeting, open subject to the open meeting laws of the state of Texas. This is also a Zoom meeting, so if anybody's here by Zoom and would like to ask any questions on the agenda that's presented on the website, there's a Zoom address and a way that you can go in and actually raise your hand and we will recognize you at that point in time. At this point, we do have a forum present, I'm going to ask Scott Kimball to lead us into the invitation following our pledge from Robert Clinton.
Oh, please stand. Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you, we thank you for this country that we live in, we thank you for the state that we live in, we thank you for this city. Father, we thank you that we live under the rules that you established from your seat in heaven. And we thank you that man has adopted and adapted those to fit to be what it's supposed to be. Or I thank you that we can peacefully assemble, we can discuss things, and we can take care of the business we need to take care of. Lord, we just thank you that you'll give us wisdom tonight, that you'll guide us, that our words will be words that encourage and uplift, Lord, and that there'll be words that do the business that needs to be done. Father, we thank you and praise you for all these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance is to the Texas one state under God. All right, first thing under the work session is to review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statements for December. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir, I do. On the income section of it, we have a huge amount of money, thirteen thousand some odd dollars that has come in. Where did that money come from, Mike? Do we know?
We're arguing.
It was under miscellaneous income. At twenty-nine thousand one thirty-five, we were budgeted for six thousand seven sixty-six, so we're at four hundred and seventy-eight percent of our miscellaneous income.
It came from some past due payments that were done for the Joshua Crossing permits, engineering fees, there was a couple of different invoices, one was for a little over fourteen thousand dollars. All those were when they sold out, and now this new guy who's developing them now, all those were paid.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I'd like to ask, and this may just be kind of a general question. We get all however many pages with the line item breakdowns, do we really need that in our packet each month? Can we not just get the summary pages and skip the line items?
What's quarter is what Josh was doing, but I think it was always the third month or quarter, so I don't know, maybe since this was December. I think this is the
Which is December's last month.
Software, so that may be why she's just generating stuff, but if you want to see, you just want to see the
The summary sheet.
Yeah, we can do that.
So it just makes
Quarterly do the Yeah, do it, but it's like, you know, for January, you know, for December, March, June, and September.
Which this would have been December's financial statement, so it should have been in there, but I just think it's ridiculous to be seeing those line item things every month. It's just kind of a waste of time and money.
Yeah, we can do that, sure.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question, this may be for, this may be better asked to Chief Short, or maybe Mike. On the general fund, the police department here under miscellaneous, says annual budget was four hundred, year-to-date actual was seven five hundred, says they used up eighteen hundred and eighty-six percent of that budget. That's what it says, right? So, okay, so yeah, so it says that the annual budget for the miscellaneous was four hundred, but that the actual total used amount was seven thousand five hundred and forty-five, and it says percentage of budget used was eighteen hundred and eighty-six percent. I just was curious what that was.
I need to look.
Sure, yeah.
It's a personnel one, man.
So this is under
No, it's a personnel. What is, sometimes those percentages get way out of whack when you're under a small number, but yeah, it looks like
Well, right, and so I just
Four hundred dollars in the budget, that would be seventy thousand.
Yeah, and I had kind of figured that, you know, if it went over, you know, eight hundred or a thousand or something, somebody would have a, you know, be able to say, oh yeah, I know what that was, so.
It's very possible it's just something miscoded when it was entered, so we'll be more than happy to check in for it.
I know we had it.
That seems strange.
Anywhere we spend, we have a contract for reporting system, and it's about fifty-five hundred, so that looks like that might be something that actually belongs in another line item.
Right, okay.
That's the only thing I think of, hit that dollar amount.
Okay.
Anything else, Paul? I think that that's it for me.
Rick? You have any questions on the budget?
All right, next I was discuss the draft for the amended substandard structure and dangerous building ordinance. Mike? I hear this is an ordinance that the city attorney's office has been working on for a few months, it got kind of put on a back shelf after some of the pandemic stuff, and then they got to finish up. In jest, this is an existing ordinance that already exists, the rewrite was to put in new legislative changes that have been enacted over the last couple of years. Some of the change, the majority of them are, they've added some notification, extended notification periods, they've added some public meetings. When you, when you start talking about getting to the point to demolish buildings. These are mainly for buildings that are, have been damaged either by tornado or fire or something along those lines when you may remember years ago, there was a home that burned down in the Paladuro, I think the street over in a section of town. I think it took us five years to get that before we moved to take the house down, so it's, this just cleans up some of the stuff and makes it legal to adapt to the new changes or the new laws that have been put in place. I think we've now used this ordinance twice that I've been here.
Now, Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, some of the changes are very technical, there were some two thousand nineteen amendments to the Texas Local Government Code that addressed substandard buildings, and so we wanted to bring that into compliance with state statute. Also, several years ago, the Texas Supreme Court ruled on how quickly and what kind of notices are required for someone, for a city to go in and tear down a building, and so in two thousand nineteen, the legislature made some amendments, and then we went through and changed the ordinance as a result of that, and I just brought it into compliance with the state law, as Mike said. If there are any specific questions you have, we're happy to answer them, but a lot of these are detailed, kind of detailed revisions, mostly about notice and about the authority of the city to go in and tear down a building, and then issues about securing a building in case there is a substandard building that poses some sort of health, safety risk to members of the public. And what we anticipate is if this is okay with you, that it would be on next month's agenda, a final ordinance for consideration and approval by the council.
I have one question about the right of entry. You know, it says, there's all the reasons that we need to notify the folks that we want to come in and everything, if they let us, we go in. But the last sentence in there, and this is in the original one as well, it says that entry is refused, building official shall have recourse to the remedies provided by the law to secure entry. Can you sort of expand on what that means?
In certain cases, if we don't get approval to go forward with it, if someone doesn't allow someone onto their property, we can get an administrative search warrant if we do, if there is some sort of issue with the building being, you know, substandard, so substandard as no cause of health or safety issue. So there are a few times when our option really is, if someone says you can't go on my property or refuse it, and in the, and say the, say the condition of the house may, may impact the neighbor, then what we would do is we would go into municipal court and get administrative search warrants, we'd go on the property to check it, and then take whatever appropriate action we may need to secure the house.
Okay, so the judge would have to like basically give us the authority to do the search warrant, okay?
Yes, sir.
A couple of other ones, and again, I apologize, some of these were in the original, but since we're looking at it, I just want to get some questions answered. Under the section three point zero three point zero zero five, conditions constitute a substandard building. And one of the, under paragraph B, number one, it says whenever any door, aisle, passageway, stairway, or other means of exit is not sufficient width or size, and is not so arranged to provide safe and adequate means of escape in case of fires. What about like stuff that's grandfathered in, I mean, what if somebody just actually had a small doorway, I mean, we're not going to go in there and be applying this to that, are we?
No, I mean, I think honestly, if you look at tons of houses, they're probably a component or two that may constitute a substandard structure. And, and again, we don't, we don't go in there, I mean, first off, we'd have no cause or no reason to go into someone's property. What this, like, like Mike says, and a couple of times in years, I, you know, I, to be honest with you, in most cities, I mean, we have to have some reason to under, basically from viewing the property outside, or from some sort of complaint generated by a neighbor to actually go in there and check if there is an issue. So we're going to, we're going to do mostly, look at the house from the outside, because we don't have the authority just to go in and start checking houses. So we'd have to have some sort of, of a reason to go in there and do that. So, so in that subsection B, it talks about different parts or different, different components of a house that could, could constitute a substandard structure. But I would kind of venture to guess that in a lot of houses that may have a component or two, the house is perfectly fine, and we're not going to do anything about it, because we have, we don't know about it, number one, and we don't have a basis for going into the house to take a look at it.
Okay, I appreciate that, I know there's some folks that's concerned, and I read on Facebook that, I would make sure that's what it was, if we were just working on being going into everybody's house and checking, make sure they get all the conditions. That was all I had, any more? Scott, is there any specific requirement, I mean, criteria, when you are just driving through somebody's house, it's like, I don't like that? Is there any, there needs to be some rule set up? You know, criteria to go in there?
Well
Just you just don't like the looks of the house?
No, I mean, there's not really, because we don't like the looks of, that doesn't make that a substandard structure, a substandard structure really has to meet the requirements of some sort of, basically like a, a, a health or safety issue as, as a consequence. Just not liking the looks of the house wouldn't, wouldn't be enough. To give you an example of one that we've actually been involved with over the years, a house was struck by lightning and there was a hole in the roof. And again, you don't, in this other city, we don't, we didn't go out and immediately say, oh, you have a substandard structure, you have a hole in your roof, you have rain coming in, it's a problem, however, the, the house went, went unrepaired for over a year, so needless to say, it was a very serious problem with rain, the elements getting into the house, and then go, there was a detailed notice procedure, you have to go through interstate law, brought the, brought the landowner and her attorney into, before the Board of Adjustment for a hearing, and went through a process to, to get the roof repaired, and then followed up to make sure the roof indeed was repaired. And so it's, it's not a quick process to do this necessarily, and the only time we really have the ability to go on the property and do something, if it really is an immediate danger, we have to secure the property immediately, just for public safety. But this isn't one of those things you go, I don't like my neighbor's house, or I think there's a problem with it. This is enforcing this ordinance is a, is a, is a, it goes to municipal court, it's proof beyond a reasonable doubt, there, there are issues, so there are standards of proof that we'd have to have beyond a reasonable doubt before we could go in there and get a conviction for a violation of this. So this is, again, it is used sparingly by most cities, but it does give you recourse if you just have a building that may be falling down or close to falling down, and you're, we're concerned about, you know, members of the public possibly being hurt.
Also saying in there where it says must have sufficient natural lighting, I guess that's sunlight?
Well, it'd be windows and yes.
There's no, there's no standard to go by, and also, how would you measure this?
Well, again, it's either going to be the deterioration in the house is obvious from the outside, or there's a complaint generated by a neighbor that we would go out and look at. We, we don't go on a private property, we're not, we're not allowed to go on a private property, we have to have the authority to do that. And so, so again, as I would tell you, there may be a component here that is, is in and of itself, I mean, we would, we would never know or have any way of knowing it. So, and these standards are established by state law, so we're not, we're not coming up with a bunch of standards on our own, this is, this is pretty standard stuff under state law, and, and so, so again
It just looks like it's too much interpretation on this, and also says the interpretation will be up to this place.
Well, the inspector has to make a determination.
It's all in the eyes of the people.
Well, one thing, Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, but what happens on this, if we decide that there is a deal that's substandard, and we turn it over to the zoning board of the justice, which is made up of citizens of Joshua, then they're the ones that actually make the ruling as to whether or not it was or was not substandard, and then they actually have to have, if I'm not mistaken, public hearings.
Yeah.
So then, other residents can come and voice their opinions as to what's going on, the ZDA rules on it, and if there's an appeal, it doesn't even come back to the city, it goes to the county courts.
There's some places that need this, I understand, but I'm saying, there's got to be some kind of standard set up.
Well, that's what I think Terry said, is the state of Texas established the standards, and we're just going by what the state of Texas said.
Like that natural sunlight was a standard, how much it is?
I noticed, I noticed some stuff like that as well. That, that I thought was a little, a little vague, that left a lot of teeth in it for the city, that, but there wasn't much recourse for the homeowner. I did read about the, you know, the minimal amounts of natural light, which I thought was, was a little crazy. It just says general dilapidation or improper repair, I don't know how, you know, how that's going to be gauged also, but also under scope, in the very beginning of this, it says the provisions of this article shall apply to all buildings which are here and after defined as dangerous or substandard buildings, whether now in existence, or whether they may hereafter become dangerous or substandard. And then it says that all of these, hang on, let me find it, it's, it's going to be up to the opinion of the person who inspects the home. I mean, and it says that, it says opinion.
Well, I think what they're talking about there is the building inspector will be the one that brings, I guess it gets the ball rolling, if he believes based on national standards that there's, we'll give you an example of when this, when we have used this, two times that I'm aware of in the last twelve years, both burned out structures, and it was five years from the time they burned that we actually got it done, or took action. And once they determine that something's substandard, then we go to the engineers. They send structural engineers out, they generate report, is it repairable, is it not, what would it take to repair it? All that goes then to the zoning board of adjustments to make the determination if there's sufficient evidence to move forward on the house. And, and there's public hearings in there, there's notifications, like I say, two, two years, twice in, in twelve years that I'm aware of, and that's despite countless complaints from property owners and, you know, burglaries and other things going on in those properties, and so it's, I, the city does not want to be in the business of tearing down houses, it's in enormous pain. But a lot of this is legalese too, that's based on state law, we have to, we have to do certain steps before we even, it'll take us months to even get a case built before it goes to the zoning board of adjustments. And then from there, it goes to the appellate court if there's, if, even if, if the zoning board of adjustment says, yes, it can be taken down, if they appeal, then we stop and then we go to the next court. So it's a lengthy process.
Define two thousand dollars upon notice, once it's seen, and then the next day from that, but still there, another two.
That's it, the fine could be up to that amount, they're typically not, the judge would set those in the case that a citation is issued. We don't issue past citations every day.
Okay, I just, I just read that in.
Yeah, we, we would issue one, it could go through the court process, and then if, if they didn't resolve it, then, then another one could be issued, we don't do it daily.
If the key word to fix it, we give them fines like that, because they really keep fixing them.
Well, and the thing about it is, we try to get people to, to work with us, I mean, we're not interested in tearing down anything. We, we've been working with this burned house on Wayside for years. She's tied up in court in litigation, and we understand that, and despite the complaints, we're still giving her time. She submitted a plan to rebuild it, she's got the engineering plans, she's doing what she can do, she's just held up litigation, that's not her fault.
I don't know about anybody else, I've had calls like homeless, and they're afraid that they're going to stop in front of the house, and the wind just barge in and start flapping.
We have no reason to do that, this is for tornadoes coming through and partially tearing up houses, fires burning, you know, if we need to push a wall down because everything's burned down around the house.
Is that, is that making what's in here? If it's not, let's put it down there so we got it.
Well, I mean, I guess you can put in there whatever you want, but the, the language that prohibits us from doing certain things is very clear.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm saying, you know.
I think it'd just be impossible to try and do that, because you could have a bunch of cars go into the house, or a bunch of kids, that baseball bats in the other house. And again, most of the time, homeowners insurance is going to kick in, and we'll never even say anything. But if they just let it sit like that for a long time, then that's at what point
There's places that could be a hazard for the people inside, I know that.
And so the problem is you're not going to be able to cover every single instance, but again, there's a long process that it has to go through before anything's going to happen.
I think people are just afraid that they're going to be stopping in front of the house.
Well, again, this, this has been on the books, for how long has this been on the books? Yeah, two thousand eight, it's been there a while.
It's been 13 years, and we haven't had anybody, we haven't gone into anybody's house and done anything like that, because of the couple of burn jobs.
There is one major change though to this that's, that has nothing to do with the law, which is where they changed the burden of proof. The burden of proof used to be upon the city, and now it says that the burden of proof will be upon the homeowner. And I really feel like, if you have a reason to go and tag a house as being substandard, you better be ready to, to prove it. I don't think that it's right to
That's absolutely right.
Upon the homeowner.
And we would have to prove that in court.
But it says that the burden of proof is on the homeowner, I was going to say, that, that's been checked.
Well, I think the burden of proof that it's safe is on the homeowner.
Would you please give chapter and verse on this thing so we can follow along?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, three point oh three point zero zero seven, public hearing on a pavement, and then it's section E.
Yep.
Paragraph E.
Let, let me, let me clarify this, the burden of proof at a criminal proceeding is the, is the city. This is, this is, the, the burden of proof here is not on, the, the public hearing they're talking about here is, let me make clear, there, there are two ways to attack this, one is through a criminal, a criminal site, a, a municipal court citation, and that is when someone is doing something and they refuse to, to, to stop doing something. But if there's a structural defect or whatever, there's a hearing about how you, how you correct it. The burden of proof has to be on the, and by, under state law, it's on the owner of the property about what they're going to do to establish the scope of any work that may be required to comply with, with, what's, what's, what the standards are. We can't, we, the city, we, the city can't go in there and, 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 and we're not going to go in there and hire contractors to determine what needs to be done. That is upon the land, the, the property owner to come in and say, here's what they propose to do, and here, here's why that corrects the problem. So in a situation where I have a hole in a roof with, on a private house because of a lightning strike a year, a year and a half earlier, again, we don't go on the property, we have to have it, we don't, we don't have a warrant to go on the property, so we can't go in there and determine what needs to be done. We have a hole on the roof that we can see from the street, and we tell the property owner, you have, you have a substandard structure, it's raining in your house, and they come in, and the burden of proof is in there, show, here's how we're going to correct that. That doesn't mean, that, that means only in the public hearing, if you, if you, if you read that wording, again, you have to establish the scope of the work that may be required to comply. The land, the property owner has to do that, because we can't do that, we can't go on the property and do that. And then the land, the property owner has to say, here's what I'm doing to correct the situation. Because, again, that's the property owner who, who has to do that, because we can't go on the property. So if, if, if the, for example, if the burden of proof were on the city to prove that, and we can't go on the property, then there's just no recourse, we have a, we have a burned down structure, a burned out structure, we have a, or, or severely damaged structure, and someone says, well, the city, you have the burden of proof to show what has to be done to correct the, correct the situation, you go, well, we can't go on the property, we can't do that. So if, if that were the burden of proof on the city, the ordinance really becomes of, of no, of no practical use.
I've got a question, what about the burden of proof for the inspection itself? If I drive by Robert's house and say, I, I think his roof looks like it's in bad condition and could be leaking, and it, it looks like it's got a hole in it. It's been like that for as long as I've driven by there, what is the burden of proof that the inspector needs to have in order to approach the homeowner? I didn't, I didn't see that actually in writing here, that, that, other than someone's, you know, maybe it's the neighbor that lives behind you and sees the backside of your house, or, or maybe it's an angry ex-wife, I don't know, that calls him and says, I, I know plumbing doesn't work in that guy's house, or whatever it may be, what is that burden of proof that if you get a phone call and it says, this house is substandard, you need to go check this house out? Where, what, what do we use as
We would take
legitimate reason for us to take action?
We would take a complaint if somebody called it in. They would, the building inspector would go by, drive by, look, see if he can identify the issue, if he can't, or if he can, then a letter would go out to the homeowner, making them aware of the complaint. Are they aware of the problem, do they believe there's a substandard issue, and if they would like that to be inspected, they can request it, we'll go inspect. If they say, no, I don't want you to inspect it, if the building inspector believes that there indeed is some problems that, that could be substandard, that could potentially cause a problem, a collapse, or what have you, then he would at that point have to go and get administrative warrant to go on the property and look. He would still have to go back and get permission through the process to take any action. We can't just go on people's property and fix things. So that would be the process, and usually when that kind of stuff happens, it turns out to be nothing. We've been asked to go do courtesy inspections, we don't do a lot of them, but there are some times that we'll go and do it, and there may be, yeah, there may be a problem, but it's not significant, they'll make suggestions how to fix it, and we're done. In, in the case with the, the latest fire over there a few years ago, they wanted to rebuild that house and use the same floor plan, and they wanted to use the same foundation. Well, that, that fire burned the whole top floor of that house, so what we asked for was an engineer letter saying that the foundation was stable enough to support rebuilding the house. They had an engineer come out, they inspected, he wrote a letter, said, yes, it'll work, this is what has to be done. We stamped the plans, and that's it. She's just battling with the insurance company of trying to get that resolved. So every about every ninety days or so, we, we'll reach out, find out where they are, and if it's still litigation, then we kind of put it off. We work with the surrounding people, you know, the neighbors, I mean, they have, you know, kind of some rights to You know, kind of some rights to to live in a decent neighborhood. They all understand and. So it's, I mean, it it we just make it work. We we do not want. I don't have time to turn down people's houses. And neither do our folks. This is, this just gives us an avenue for when there's no other. Usually they're abandoned when we get to that point anyway. House on Palo Duro, people walked away from it set for several years and we tore it down and. And then they sold the the lot sold and now there's a new house built on it, but. It's very seldom that we get to the point where the city is going to take any action on this. All this says is if you do get to that point, these are the laws you got to follow. This is state stuff. It's not it's not us. We just have to adhere to that.
Correct. I got another question.
Yes, sir.
Under three point zero three point zero zero four, number two. Building official fire chief needs or other destiny about city manager. Anybody that does this, are they going to have the credentials to do it?
Absolutely.
Certified case for plumbing, electrical, structural.
Building official would be the one making them. The building official would be the one making the inspections. If we got to this point and if it was a fire, the fire marshal or the fire chief would be with.
Right. Don't talk about city's homework services or designate.
That's the building official. That's who is designated in this city to do that. And he is certified in structural inspections.
For his destiny.
We don't have it. We only have one building official.
Okay, but anybody that goes in and builds that store has certified.
Absolutely. Excellent.
Okay.
If we go into the house, we're going with an engineer also.
Yeah, we don't want it blown out because somebody went in there, didn't know what they stood.
Yeah, no, anytime that we go and do that, we would take the city engineer with us. So that we have two eyes on it. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Uh, on the last page. Thirty point oh three point zero one five. It looks like it's completely struck. The authority for any immediate demolition. Is that correct?
Yes.
So within this, within this. Document, there is nothing that gives us the ability to immediately demolish anything, correct?
That's correct. With the state law changes and with the Texas Supreme Court ruling, that's correct.
That answers my question. Thank you.
One more than, yeah. I want to go back and and ask. About the burden of proof again, because in here I see where where we took out. The city has the burden of proof to establish that the building or structure at issue is not in compliance with the applicable city codes. And is substandard as defined by this article. And to identify the specific deficiency or code violation. I'm just wondering why we removed that. And then the new part says that the owner, lien holder, mortgage.
It's not new. That was.
I know. I'm saying, I'm saying, why is it that we removed? Uh where it says that the city has the burden of proof to establish that the building is not in compliance.
Are you?
Where are you?
Yeah.
I'm still on the uh.
Out of me. Three.
Yeah, I gotta find it. Three dot zero three dot zero zero seven public hearing of statement. Get all the way down to. At burden of proof again.
You're you're still asking about E, why it was changed?
Right. No, I'm asking, why is it then under burden of proof? I mean, he he was basically saying earlier, well, I mean, it's the the burden of proof is still on the city. But I'm just wondering if it is, then why has it been stripped out?
Because.
I why did we take that part out?
No, because there are two, there are two parts here. And if in a criminal, if we issue a citation, the burden of proof is on the city. This is for a public hearing where the landowner comes, the property owner comes in with a proposed um. Uh repairs that are necessary. So there 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 are two different components here.
Or it would also be where he would say, hey, look. My people are saying this is not the case. What you're what you're claiming is not true. Right? So so it's his burden of proof that that either this is what. We I have to do the fixing, or here's people who say that, no, it doesn't need to be fixed.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
That would be at a public hearing.
That would be at a public hearing.
Not at the. That's not in court.
Not.
Okay, so where is that then in here? Where does it show then that the initial? Uh, interaction then is the burden of proof is upon the city then? Because I don't, I mean, I've read it and I, I mean, it may be in here. I just haven't seen it.
If you give me just a second, I'll tell you exactly.
Okay.
It is in the criminal penalties part. Let me try to find it.
Okay.
I saw that earlier.
That would be.
Three point oh three point zero zero three criminal penalty. The criminal penalty.
Forty one of the packet.
If you said three point zero three point zero zero three, it's about the. Second page into the red line version. That's the criminal penalty and and the burden of proof is always on the state, which would be the the is to the city in in municipal court.
And that's where we'd be before the officer would even actually be able to get in there and see it. I think where we're hung up is 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 the question, when can the inspecting officer? Make entry into the home to or property to see.
They, the only two ways, the only two ways a code enforcement officer, building, excuse me, building, excuse me, building official. To go on the property. One is with the consent of the property owner. And one is if if is if there is something that merits immediate attention and they ask for an administrative search warrant. From a judge and the judge would have to issue it. But other than that, those are the only two ways you can get on property.
Three dot zero three dot zero zero three.
Yes, sir.
I quit saying is if we write a ticket and it goes to court, the burden of proof is on the city.
I get it. I'm just saying it used to be in here and now it's not.
No.
Where mine says any person per blah blah violates. Two thousand dollar fine. Three dot zero three dot zero zero three.
Criminal. Yes, sir.
Right. And that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed.
The one that did change was had to do with public hearings.
Correct. I understand that. What I'm saying is it did used to read somewhere in the ordinance and I don't, I mean, doesn't. It doesn't matter to me where it was. It said that the burden of proof to to prove that the deficiencies or or defects. Fell on the city. And I'm just wondering why it wasn't added in somewhere else.
It does say that. It does say exactly what you're what you're saying. Under the part further back where it talks about. The appeals court. When when it's when it's actually gone to that court. That's where they this, that's where that was in there, but if we live in the early portion.
Okay.
Mayor, I think what might be good is because there are so many questions is maybe if we could ask. If you have a question, if you'll jot those down for me and send them to me. I'll have carry address each one of those. We'll send that out to you. And we'll bring this back next month and talk about it again. No. Yeah, because it's not over action tonight. It's for this discussion. But if if y'all can send me all of those, we'll get those answers. Get it referenced and then I'll get those answers back out to you. And then we'll we'll look at it again next month if that suits you.
Ray, all right with that?
Yeah, I think what we look for is do you have probable cause to go there? But I think the same way to make it a arrest or something. Right, anybody else? All right, next item is discussing the scene directional establishment and everything that fire marshal's office. Serve as a law enforcement organization by the Texas Commission of Law Enforcement. Chief Griffin. Uh, Buster, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Uh, I believe you have a copy. Yeah, we just got this to that. I don't know if you had a chance to read. You maybe sort of go over the highlight. Sure. Uh, what I'm wanting to do is establish the fire marshal's office as a law enforcement agency to give this full autonomy to investigate. Kind of uh fire issues are. Um also. Uh, Mike has asked the fire department to take on the responsibility of code enforcement for the city. Uh, any of the things you're talking about here tonight is talked about. Might possibly also fall under our our purview in that regard. So by giving us that license or stating the licensure from the state for the law enforcement agency would. It was the ability to do any kind of investigation on our own. For example, most fire departments, if they have an R C fire and have to investigate, they have R C investigators, which we do also. Assistant Chief Cracking, who is the current fire marshal. We go in and do investigation and any kind of, it'd be part of the criminal aspect of that investigation case. But generally, if it's filed in the district attorney, we would have to go through your your local police department. Uh, because as a, just as a fire department, we couldn't file criminal charges through the district attorney. Uh, if we were our own law enforcement agency, we'd have complete autonomy to do all of that, handle every aspect of the case. The code enforcement part of this, which I just mentioned, is. Now, as you know, getting compliance from people willingly to correct issues, whatever those might be. Uh, sometimes it's difficult for civilians, even though they may be given the authority to enforce those codes. Uh, peace officers have a little bit more. Uh, credibility is the right word. Uh, the appearance of authority and so forth does have a tendency to go further. With individuals to gain compliance. It's not that we're trying to intimidate anybody. But that's just the natural. Something that comes along with the decision. Um, trying to think here, what else you might want to notice.
One of these things is need to like to allow him to carry firearm. Right now Joey, our our fire marshal. He's authorized to carry a firearm, but currently the way we're structured, he's not allowed to. By doing this, that he would be able to carry a firearm. And a lot of this comes in play when you're doing arson investigations and things like that. You're on an active scene. And you need to be able to protect yourself. Uh, I think most of the other departments in the area. Their fire marshals, you know, carry firearms. Uh, Chief Griffin also has. The proper licensing and everything to be able to carry a firearm as well. And this not, you know, where we were doing these types of things, like if you had an investigation or something going on. It would give us, you know, them the authorization to carry their firearm as well.
And, you know, again, part of this is we don't have arson fires, you know, every day. It's obvious we don't. And that's not why we're doing this. It's just preparation for one thing. Uh, takes some of the burden off Chief Short. Their their personnel wouldn't have to get involved in anything like that. Uh, if it came to that situation. Code enforcement as well. As peace officers, we would have the ability, and we talked about having a warrant in order to do certain things with these properties. Uh, as peace officers, we could write the warrant to show the federal criminal procedure requires at a certain point, there's a. There's an order issued to a peace officer. Uh, right now, that would have to be. Chief Short essentially in his personnel to accompany us to do the sorts of things. So this kind of streamlines and and gets us more, it sounds to me like it gets us more reliance wherever we want to get. You know, the extra personnel are coming on board and uh. Gives you more the streamline and get things done. It is looking towards the future as well.
Yes.
We're the third largest community in Johnston County, but getting bigger. Uh, these things will start expanding the issues that we can have. Just multiply this. Time goes by. I'm sorry. I have a tendency to speak loud. As we're getting bigger, these these issues are going to multiply and we're going to have more and more code enforcement issues. I'm sure we have quite a few right now. I have already outlined some plans on how we're going to deal with those things. A lot of what I want to do is proactive. Uh, and notifying people ahead of time before violations occur. For example, you know, everybody always complains about I weed the grass. We we would find the problem areas that we usually have every year and then. Get the information on those property owners, send them a letter ahead of time at the beginning of the growing season. Just alerting them to the requirements of the ordinances. Hey, we appreciate that you would. Uh, maintain the property. You're not in violation now. It's just letting you know that, you know, it's your responsibility. Uh, you'll be notified if there's a violation. Give them all that information heads up. Given the ordinances they can look at as well. Uh, so that's what I want to do is I want to tackle all the issues uh proactively and try to head them off where they happen. And then the ones that do exist. Very quickly deal with them initially and then. You know, if people refuse to cooperate and, you know, we we send letters, you have to give a citation. That may come to that at some point in some instances, but I don't foresee us. Writing tons of citations. That's not something we want to do. Peace officers have training. Dealing with uh situations where you may escalate and so forth. You have ways of talking to people to gain compliance rather than using intimidation or.
Julie, I guess you just said, one of the things that actually lasted, he didn't specifically say, but was hiring a part-time person. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars a year. Basically where we're getting that is Mike is already doing some of the budget preparations. And he's determined that we didn't need to full time. Code enforcement if we could move this to the fire department. So he's already notified our current code enforcement that. In sixty days, that position will be eliminated. So we will have funds and will actually be saving quite a bit of money. By going this particular route. And, you know, that's sort of what we've been looking at. Bob Blackford coming up with this idea, but I think it will. However, we've got the firemen are sort of out in neighborhoods all the time. They can see these things. They might not be able to do it while they're over called. It's something they could follow up on and having this other individual to take care of stuff like, you know. Bandit signs and stuff like that, you know, maybe on a part-time basis. I think he's asking for twenty hours a week, but Julie, you have a question?
Yes, sir. I just had two two things. I'd like to talk to you after about an issue about that, which is something that you're. Let me, since I put a price on one side of my house. But we're talking about carrying guns. Obviously, that's totally different than L T C. But are, would you be licensed like chief here would be licensed?
I'm currently licensed as a peace officer.
Okay, okay. So you.
Assistant Chief Cracking is also.
Got you. Okay, so you you have. Basically, you're a fireman, a policeman, all the same.
We're not armed in the fire department.
No, no. And in our country, our carrying firearms would be, you know, I wouldn't be walking around carrying a firearm all the time. It would be, you know, what, that you do these, right?
Oh, it wouldn't bother me a bit. All right, anybody else have any other tricks?
Asking for more duties to be put in your department?
No, actually Mike asked if we would.
How many? Miss percentage, how many missed calls did you make last?
I think it was thirty five.
Thirty five?
Yeah.
And before that, we've been saying every month, twenty, twenty-five percent missed calls. I can't see doing this until we can start making our own calls on the fire department. It's like there are some more duties, but you can't speed up.
Well, we've got a three fireman that we've got through the safer branch will be starting next week. And that way they'll be on seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And we've usually got volunteers at the station. The problem is we haven't had people that can drive the equipment. These levels will be able to be there seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day to drive the equipment. They can take. The personnel. Chief, if he has a call, he's going to go on that call. He's got his radio. I've gone to lunch with the guy right in the middle of evening. He gets a call, he takes off. He's not going to have a call come in and he's out doing some code enforcement. He's not going to sit there and wait on the code enforcement. He's going to jump on the call.
If I could add to that, most of the missed calls we're. Most of the calls we're missing are at night. And then in the early morning hours and they're not, it's not because we're too busy doing other things because. Uh, we don't have volunteers showing up to take call. I have the. I have the highest call volume rate in the department, I answer more calls than anybody else. Probably Chief, Assistant Chief Crackey, who was on there a while ago, probably has the second highest. And I do get up in the middle of the night responding to calls, but it's not because we're overloaded with duties that we're missing those calls. It's because volunteers are not either showing up or, or they can't get to the call.
I just thought we needed the code enforcement doing it full time.
I have a question for you, Chief. When you said that you guys are, are missing calls, how, how do you determine what is, what is adequate staff and what is not? Are y'all using the NFPA guidelines for, for staffing? Or is it, you know, are you using your own guidelines? Cause I mean, this is volunteer and I know about the NFPA seven-ten and, and I mean, that's more dear, I mean, that's, that's for like paid departments. So I'm wondering what you guys are using to gauge that adequately staffed or non-adequately staffed?
What we're gauging, using right now is as many people as we can get standard.
Well, right now, I'm saying like NFPA's, you know, four man apparatus, and so are you using that or using your own?
Well, I can't use it right now. What I have done with the grant is we, in the grant, I had to articulate at what level will we increase our staffing percentage wise to try to comply with those standards?
Right.
And that's what we're working towards, is full compliance. Now, the only way we can have full compliance is if we can make sure that we have four people on scene within a certain given amount of time.
Right.
That doesn't always happen right now. Now, with the new firefighters, we anticipate that will happen. If I remember correctly, in the, in the grant, the percentage increase would go from like, right now, we're like ten percent. Would go up to about sixty percent compliance. So we are dramatically increasing it. But most of the calls we're missing that happen in the middle of the night are medical calls, they're not fire calls.
Is that your on-demand hour, I mean, like your highest on-demand hours are in the early morning or?
It varies. It's just that those calls in the middle of the night are the ones that we're missing the most, every day we don't miss calls.
Right, okay.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
It's just my observation, but I think I foresee if we do this within a year or so, we're going to have to hire somebody else over there to do it, because they get pretty busy, the code enforcement, when people start calling in all the time.
The.
These duties are both there. These duties are being, being added on to the, the Chief Crackey's, Assistant Chief Crackey's position, right, the fire marshal position. Well, yes, fire marshal, but not all of them. And then so, it's kind of, I mean, we're saving one department head and one person and sending it over where we have people. I, I don't see a problem.
Two and a half people, we'll have the chief, we'll have the fire marshal Crackey, and then we would also have the part-time individual.
Right now, the code enforcement officer spends a lot of his time doing building inspections, because he also holds certifications there. That is not what he is for. He chooses not to do that, so I'm going to fix it for him.
He chooses to postpone.
He chooses not to focus on code enforcement, he wants to be a building inspector. That's not what we hired him for. So he, he has not wanted to make the change on his own after multiple requests, so I'm going to change it for him.
So what do we have for building inspection, we'll put that on the fire department too?
Building inspector that does that.
So why is our code enforcement guy doing if we have a building inspector? Question. We, 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 we've got a snowball effect here, all right? We, we've got a fire department that over the years has proven to be less than a hundred percent effective in reaching out and hitting the goals that they've set for themselves. All right, we've hired three new firefighters that aren't even at work yet and we're saying, hey, this is going to fix it up to sixty percent. We've got nothing to base that on, other than somebody's idea of how it should work, all right? The, the, the fire marshal, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of split on that part of it. But adding anything else to that fire department's responsibilities, until we see proven increases and results of this expense that we've put the city into hiring these additional people, I'm, I can't support doing the, the, the building code, the, the code enforcement over there. That just doesn't make sense to me, not yet. You know, once, once we've seen an improvement, once we see that these people are actually going to make the changes that we need made, which we've been hollering for, for six years, I think, I think then I could get behind saying, okay, let's, let's look at doing that. But, but again, you know, we, we get this letter tonight, walking in, you know, I, I, I think we need to table this and have some time to think about it before we get too much into making decisions about it.
Tell them the work session, we're not doing anything tonight. We've got sixty days with the other department. If the officers are starting Monday, correct, as a new ones, they're starting Monday. So I mean, it's not like we've got to do anything, we're not doing anything tonight, we don't have to do anything next month. You know, maybe in March, we could have some of the stuff put together and then in March, make that decision.
I'm, like I said, I'm, I, I'm willing to, to, to look at it.
But you also have to understand that that's part of why we're setting this up. We're not adding anything on the fire department, we're adding it to the fire marshal's office. The day-to-day rank and file firefighters will not be doing code enforcement.
But when we're depending on our, our fire chief, our assistant fire chief, fire marshal to be one of the four people who shows up whenever a truck needs to be there, you know.
They will still be there.
We're at, we're adding more responsibility to them than, than we need to right now. Let's get the fire department under control first. Yes, sir.
And I understand your concerns and I, I agree with you, but let me reassure you, first of all, as Mike said, the responsibility for code enforcement won't do anything to detract from the response of the firefighters in our department. That is strictly an administrative issue. It's handled as, you know, it comes along. And I know that through organization, a lot of these issues can be dealt with very easily and eliminated. And we won't be dealing with a buildup complaints. The other thing is when these three firefighters start and we get them on shift, our missed call rate was over virtually to zero. And I know, I really don't feel like I'm sticking my neck on that. As I said, primarily all of these calls are at night, after myself and Assistant Chief Crackey have gone home. Because we answer all the calls primarily during the day with assistance of some volunteers who can come in and staff the station during the day. We also have a couple or three dedicated volunteers who come in and staff the station at night sometimes. And on those nights, we don't miss calls. Now, when these three individuals, these firefighters are put on shift, they will be there to answer that EMS call, which is, as again, is what I was saying earlier, are the calls that we primarily miss. We don't generally miss a fire. We may not get there with everybody we need, but we will get to the fire. And then when mutual aid assistance shows up, you know, we, we do our job. Since I've been here, we've had quite a few fires and we've tackled them all fairly efficiently and we've gotten them out before substantial damage this time. So I, I, I always want to make sure that the council understands that we really are going to solve a major issue with these three firefighters. It won't take time at all to find out if that's the case, because the effects will be immediately visible after they go to shift, whereas they'll be here at night.
How quick will they be going to shift?
I'm sorry?
How quick will they be going to shift? They start next week, are they going to shift next week or do they have a?
First week, they have to come in from eight to five every day to orientate, to learn the station, the equipment, how we do things here. They have to get all that, you know, we don't, we'll just throw them on shift cold. We anticipate the following week, they'll start shift. That's assuming that it goes as planned during this first week.
Sure.
I've lived here for twenty-two years. You're steering me to death telling me that, am I here to destroy it like, if I'm going to have a heart attack, I better not have it at four o'clock in the morning, I better have it at twelve o'clock noon.
No, no ma'am.
And are these men going to be working at night, seven days a week? It's every single day, empty covered, you're saying they're not going to miss calls?
Let me explain, first of all, when I said missed call, this would mean nobody shows up and calls, means that no one from the firefight. The ambulance is housed in our station, but that is possibly, so you are getting.
And that's a completely different company. She was saying, no, that's a different company, that's supplied by Johnson County, that's not the city of Johnson County.
Well, Chief, Chief, let, let, let me explain something a little bit, okay? Your predecessor made a lot of promises to this council that this is going to fix this issue. And yeah, we can take on this extra burden of doing this and, and so on and so forth. And we kept seeing those promises come back unfulfilled. Because of it being a volunteer circumstance, because of it being whatever excuse was put up, all right? So I personally, and, and just a little bit leery of promises coming from your position, not you personally, but from what I have seen of that position, I, I have a hard time, as much as I want to believe you, believing you till I see results. If these people are going to make a change, then we will see it in the February council notes. We, we, we will see it that quickly is, is what you're telling us.
Well, not in February, it was February, it was January, so we should, he should know what's going on.
But he's going to, he's going to sit in that chair in February and say, hey, I want to let you know, this is what's going on so far this month, because I'm going to ask you.
Right.
Okay.
We will probably take the actions of March. So in March, he'll have the whole month of February, and they will be open from February first forward, so.
You, you, you understand why I'm, I'm lucky to just jump right on this and say, hey, this is, this is a good thing. I, I'm sorry, but I want a little bit of proof. And, and I'm putting that burden on you. And, and like I said, it's nothing personal, it's just over the years I've sat on this council, I've watched time and time again, this fire department make promises that it has not kept. And we're going to fix that problem by doing this. And a little more money's had to be thrown at the problem, a little bit extra of this has had to be thrown at the problem. And it's never fixed it. So, so I'm, I'm excited with these three new full-time firefighters that, that we have hired with this grant. I'm excited to see the change in that, but I want to see the change. I, I really want to see the change. And, you know, as far as, as doing the fire marshal's department and all that kind of stuff, again, I understand exactly what you're asking for. You've put it very well together here, I would like a little more time to, to digest and maybe ask a few more questions. Yeah, but I, I think the direction you're wanting to go is a very good direction. But as far as putting anything else on, on the assistant chief or, or the fire marshal or you or anybody else, I want to see that we got some other problems fixed first. I want a hundred percent focus on getting a hundred percent fully manned vehicles where they're supposed to be when that bell goes off. I don't want a citizen calling and saying, well, the ambulance was sitting there, but no fire truck showed up. You know, I, I, I don't want to hear those things anymore. I, I want to hear, yes, we had people there, we, we, we had what we were supposed to have, where we needed them, when we needed them. And, and then we can think about how we can expand and do things better within our city, utilizing the resources that we have. That's my.
I agree with you a hundred percent, and that's why I was hired to solve that problem.
And, and I have seen so many steps in the right direction. I, I really have, and like I said, I'm, I, I just want you to understand, it's, it's that seeing's believing, that's what I want to see. I want, I want to believe, but I've got to see it first.
Sure, thanks, sir. And, and I would just ask council to, you know, try to put in the, in the back, past the errors of my predecessor and try not to judge me based on those, because I'm not my predecessor, I can't do anything about what.
And, and that, that, that's not one, I'm, I'm just saying that because of history, I, I just want to see the proof, that's all. And I, I'm giving you every opportunity to do it and, and I want to see it. I, I want to see the numbers so that I'll be, I'll be standing right here and saying, chief, thank you very much for doing it. And I, I believe that in our March meeting, I'll be able to say that, I really do.
I do too, thank you.
So let's put this back on the work session to February. Everybody got some more questions or anything to think about it? We can talk about this more in February, but we won't be taking any action until March.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, anybody else want to ask you a quick question? How, how, if any way at all possible, is this going to negatively impact the police department, do you think?
I don't think it's negatively, we, 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 here it goes, we actually right now have this call attention, just hang with me, we take care of that, from the police service. Like Chief mentioned, they had, they had one arson fire that they investigated, and we worked with them on that and our infected related, like you said, the district county office. Joey is a peace officer for the city of Johnson County, I threw up through the police departments today. And, and so it doesn't really, it doesn't do anything. It takes something off of me. You know, I'm not, I don't have to work out. Better estimation.
Okay.
Thanks.
Awesome, thanks.
You may ask any other questions? What? Just covering up quick. All right, next item is discussion on changing the street name, Mountain Air to Plum Free. This is a street that runs next to Joshua Station where we got the, it's not where the Starbucks is going in, but down where the Panda Express, that last street used to get trailer parked down on the end. And it's right directly across the street from Plum Street, so that there's, we're getting ready to have tech stop and everybody else in here working. And I think it would just be a lot cleaner if we would go ahead and change that to Plum Street. It does require ordinance, but I wanted to get it out, just make sure I was the only person thinking that and just get a consensus from the council, but they all think that's a good idea to change that.
I thought we had a gas line issue is why we couldn't make that a public street.
The, the way that it was originally drawn up to build that gas line was an issue. What we're doing now is moving it over to get it out of the way of that gas line.
So it's like you come in and immediately turn to.
No, it was actually going to be out of whack the way we were going to do it. What they wanted to do was leave enough room to the south of the street to redevelop, but there, there's not enough room there when you look at our setbacks and things like that, there's not.
So the gas line is actually on the north side?
Yes.
So, so the street will be built on the south side of the, the gas line?
Yes, it'll just move over, I believe, eight feet.
Okay.
And it gets it completely out of the way.
Okay, I, I, I remembered that gas line issue when we talked about it before, so.
Everybody else all right with doing that? Talking about the ordinance, we'll do that next month.
And then we need to dedicate right away to marriage. Okay, so we, Harry, we can do that all at once, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next item is discussing the state update from city manager on future and current items. I'd ask Mike to put together something, it's not a real big deal, getting included in the package just so that we know, so we get an update every month, where are we at on the underpacks, where are we at on the left end, what, where are we at on the subsidies? Where are we at, I don't know about y'all, but I get that question asked a lot. And sometimes if I forget to ask, well, I don't know. So he's going to start including that every month, you had it in there this month, and I thought it was very adequate, but I just want to get some comments and see if everybody else felt the same way that, you know, to get that information, so when people ask us, we can give them a good answer. All right, we'll continue doing that. Next is a question regarding regular session items. Does anybody have any thing on any item that's on our agenda? All right, if not, we'll go into our regular session. First item is public forum, it's where we give citizens an opportunity to get up and speak. Unless the item was specifically on the agenda, we are required under the Texas Meetings Act to limit our response to a specific factual statement reciting the city's existing policy or directing the person to make an inquiry and visit the city staff. No council deliberations permitted. Alice, real quick, did we have anybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, don't have anybody speaking tonight. The next item, I'm going to move to the consent agenda, excuse me, to the consent agenda and then come back. For under the consent agenda tonight, we have the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on December seventeenth, twenty twenty, and December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty.
Move we approve?
I would like to recommend a change.
All right.
In, who was the second, I'm sorry?
Rick.
In the minutes of that meeting at the top, it's a city council president. In the minutes of that meeting at the top, it's a city council president, and he still says Jerry Moore plays up.
You want to be recognized?
I think it's, it's appropriate to reflect, uh, yes, the true outcome there.
All right, we have Mr. Robert Fleming.
I didn't see that.
Sorry. Yeah, we'll get it changed.
Wouldn't Mr. Moore hear when we called the meeting to order?
Uh, he was in November. No, that was back in November.
Yeah.
That's correct.
All right, so would you like to revise the motions and include the changes?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right. Forgot a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes, changing the folks president from Jerry Moore, Robert Fleming. Uh, motion by Scott Kimble, seconded by Ross, uh, Rick Priest. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion, jury, seven zero. Next item on the regular agenda is to discuss considering a possible action on an ordinance considering a general election to be held Saturday, May twenty, excuse me, May first, twenty twenty one. For city council place four and city council place six.
And I guess that was Alice too.
Can you go see where she had Mike? All right. Now that she's got the next, next.
Don't remember this on everybody.
All right, Dallas, we're on the, we skipped the presentation. We'll come back to that in just a second.
Okay.
So we're on the regular agenda. Item one, calling for the general election.
Yes, sir. And I actually have a little presentation to kind of go over everything here, so everyone can see it. Kind of do an update on the history of the uniform election date, since there is some proposed changes. Um, as you know, prior to two thousand and five, we have four uniform election dates that got changed. We only have two now. Now we have Senate Bill one thirty-one, which is proposing to allow cities to move the elections from May to November. I've been a little history here of the turnout. She can see our two biggest turnout was November of both times, two thousand and nineteen and twenty twenty. That was our never-ending election. Um, some things to consider. Um, general elections in November may be easier for voters to remember. November turnout, we know, will be much higher by our history. Council elections now may be drowned by state and federal elections. So that's something to think about. Also voter attention may be focused on national races, um, particularly during the presidential elections. One, the major thing we need to think about is if our elections are held in November, we have to go by the county precincts, which is five. So on election day, we would have to have five locations, four clerks at each location. That would be the one major change to think about. Um, at least until the county decides to go count and run the election. That's pretty much unless anybody has any questions on, uh, the proposed change. Next, um, in front of you have the ordinance calling the election for place four and place six, over three-year terms. Ballin' dates are January thirteenth through February twelfth. You can file either in person, by email, or by fax now. Um, in the ordinance, the designated polling place, um, for early voting is Joshua City Hall, which is required to be where my offices held if I'm the early voting clerk. And election day will propose in Joshua Community Room, the same place as the school, and they are preparing to have an election. Um, early voting by personal appearance will be April nineteenth through April twenty-third during normal business hours. Monday, the twenty-sixth, and Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, seven AM to seven PM. May election, we will only have in seven days of early voting, a lot less than last year. In this ordinance, we're appointing the election judge. Myself is the early voting clerk, and the alternate election judge is the same two that served in November. They did an outstanding job. We didn't have any complaints anyway. And then, of course, the presiding judge points to clerks to work with their own election day. Now I'm given a couple of options because it's council's decision. Um, option one actually is broken down three ways. I can service the early voting clerk and use staff members, um, to work. We'll do the same things we did this past year. We'll have it here in the council chambers. Use the two girls at the front and have two alternates in case they're out. The other way is I can service the early voting clerk and appoint two city staff members and hire one citizen as a clerk. And then, of course, the third one, um, I still service the early voting clerk, but we appoint three citizens to service clerks to work out here and take the votes. There's the process. As you can see, the most cost-effective is the first one. And then, of course, option two is to contract with the county, and a quote they've given means a little over twelve thousand dollars. Yeah, and.
Okay, question, when you, if you, under option one, the first one there, you would still have on election day, the actual other people other than yourself?
That's correct. This is just for early voting. We're required to have election judge and, uh, three clerks for election day.
You know, I thought it went pretty well this time, the way we had it set up. We had it in here separately. Somebody was manning it all of the time. Uh, and then on actual election day, so. I mean, we could have it any of the ways. I'm okay with any of them really, but like I said, it seems like, uh, unless somebody's got a reason why we should hire separate people completely to handle all the early elections.
I can tell you, um, because I stayed out here the whole time. I, it, I did not take a lunch. I stayed here until we opened, till we closed. And I met so many wonderful citizens, heard so many stories and history of the city, but I had not one complaint, but a lot of praises to the way we were set up and how everything was in the open.
I did like, I liked how it was set up.
I do have one question. We're still in the middle of this scandemic that's going on. Can we, or is there any way that we could put in here to extend the, the, or as directed by the, the governor? I, I know we've got seven days of early voting, but what if they extended it out to three weeks like they did this last time?
We would have to follow the Secretary State's direction and the order to govern.
Do we need to put that in this?
No, sir. We would have to pass, the council would have to pass another ordinance adopting those dates, just like we did this past.
Okay, so, so we have to adopt the specific dates?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, then. I would entertain a motion that, uh, we pass the ordinance to go with option one, option one, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Where we did it just like we did the last time. I'll make a motion where we. Throw option one there. All right. Got a motion by Robert Fleming, seconded by Mike Kidd. To approve the ordinance ordering a general election to be held Saturday, May twenty-first for city council place four and place six. And authorizing the city secretary to run the elections. Another discussion. All those in favor? Motion, jury, seven zero. Uh, next item is discuss considering a possible action on the resolution approving a joint election agreement between the city of Joshua and the Joshua Independent School District. This is actually, the early voting would be here. Early voting for the school would be at the school, but on election day, we would both be using the community room, just like we did for the last election. They will have their table. We would have our table. I'll entertain a motion.
A move that we accept and authorize the city manager to sign the con, the contract.
Second. Mr. Bishop. Got a motion by Scott Kimble, seconded by Edslid Nichols, to approve the resolution approving a joint election agreement between the city of Joshua and Joshua ISD, city of New York. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion, jury, seven zero. Uh, next is to discuss considering taking action on a three-eighty economic development agreement between the city of Joshua and Rumville Properties regarding the use of the property owned by the Type A Economic Development Corporation located at Twelfth and Beach. Uh, for those of you that don't know, the city actually owns the property that's sort of diagonal across here. It was the property that was behind the apartments. Right now, it's a vacant field. Uh, it's surrounded by Beach Street. It's over there somewhere. But it's by Big Street and Twelfth Street. And Mr. Rumville had come and was asking the city about additional parking. For those of you that don't know, when the city of Joshua was downtown, was actually originally done, none of the parcels have parking. All of the parking is actually in, within the city's ground. So the city is responsible for, uh, using the parking. Since we've established downtown, our sales tax numbers have been going up really well. And if anybody comes up here on, uh, Friday or Saturday nights, it's something by the parking spot. It's, you know, it's lined up. Well, we've got a, a new restaurant that's going to be opening up down at the end of the block called La Mason. It's the brand-new building that's down there. He's going to be opening that up on March first. Uh, we also have the gentleman, uh, Chris Maddox, that owns the spot next to where the beauty salon is. And he's working on having somebody in there, an outdoor venue. So it's real easy to see that if all these places are open up, we're going to be very limited on parking. So we worked with Mr. Rumville, and what he was willing to do is he will pay to get the parking lot done, and he will get repaid out of the sales tax that's generated from downtown. The estimate on the project's a little bit under two hundred thousand. Uh, he's capped at a four percent interest carry. We figured, probably based on our current numbers, he'll probably get paid off in about three years. And with the new restaurant and other new buildings, because he's wanting to put in some retail right across the street. But he didn't want to make a commitment to do the retail without adequate parking. So with this parking lot going in, he's going to develop and put up something there right across the street from City Hall. Again, we've got the new restaurant coming in down the street once Chris Maddox gets his open. So it seem like to me it's a win-win deal, but throw it out for questions or discussion.
Should we be putting this out for people to see what kind of deals we did?
Uh, he's actually required to do that. Mike, you want to answer that? Yeah, but he's required to bid the project. Um, he's done that. I haven't looked over him yet, but he did provide me with the numbers. I just haven't looked at him yet, but it has been, it'll be a lot of parking lot. I think about seventy spots. Um, concrete landscapes.
I want to say, is it going to put out for open bid?
Yes.
Different companies?
I don't know what process he used, but he did the.
I thought that the city did that.
No, in this particular case where we're subcontracting, he has to get bids, but we're not doing it. It's not like the city is actually doing it. He's doing it as an individual. He still has to get the bids, but he's the one that does, you know, goes out and does the bidding process.
Okay, I thought our purchasing department did that.
We, if we were building it ourselves, we would do that, but since we're not.
But we're paying for it, right?
We're paying back for it, but all we, we could do the same, do, we could get free bids too. We just typically do competitive bids.
Talking about, we're giving him a contract. Shouldn't be put out for bids if we get a good price?
It would be more if we put it out for bid.
Do we know that?
It's a fact. It would be more if we did.
Alex, and if we did put it out for bid, it didn't work, then we're having to pay the money upfront and wouldn't be realizing the sales tax revenue. This way, he's out money upfront, and he's only getting paid back as the sales tax driven. Any other questions?
What happened to the, uh, to the discussion about, um, switching properties and utilizing them back towards the railroad tracks?
Sort of still the, the.
That's still.
But actually, what we're going to do, and what he's willing to pay for, is he's going to take the section that's right behind where the Mexican restaurant is. He's going to pay one hundred percent of all the costs to reap it. Where, right now, Public Works has an open fence going all the way down. Uh, we've checked with Christian, and he's okay with it, because there's a gate here that he can come out. And the only thing he's got down in that other section is rocks and sand and stuff like that, that he can just drive around. So Mr. Rumville's going to actually put in all new fencing, gliding, uh, striking asphalt, and he's going to pay one hundred percent of the cost to the city. He doesn't have to pay anything.
See, that's, that's still future, but.
Well, that'll be done. That's going to be done here pretty soon.
Will be done at the same time with a lot of this.
The future is taking that Public Works all the way down to, what is it, Eighth Street? And flip it over, and he's still willing to do that as well.
That's what, that's what it's like.
Yeah.
But this, this, currently, right now, we're talking about parking lot right next door.
Oh, yes, sir.
Across the street.
Well, yes.
Do we think that this is a better idea to do it this way, or just sell the property that he can make it a parking lot for himself? I mean, I'm talking like liability-wise, as far as.
The, we had talked about that, but it's, I think that we wanted to retain ownership of it. Um, so that it's public parking and it's not restricted. Where if they own it, you know, he could restrict who uses it. He does this way, so he didn't restrict all the shots.
This is the only one that's parked here.
Okay.
Once, once it's all put in and everything, then the city will take over maintaining it and.
Yes.
All that?
Yes, he'll provide a maintenance, um, by, or not a bomb, but he's going to do the, um, a two-year warranty agreement with us. Kind of like what we do with other street stuff. He'll maintain it for a couple of weeks, and then we'll take it.
Couple of years.
I'm sorry.
Baron, council, if I could add one quick thing is.
Sure.
The copy in the packet, there was some minor change about the warranty. Uh, this is the, this is the prior version that was included in the packet. So Mike has.
I have, I have your, your.
Okay.
Even right here.
Okay. There's just some minor tweaks. Nothing of any great significance to the.
It's just a three-year payout and the, yeah, warranty.
And all those funds come through the Type A board?
It comes through all the general sales tax. We are fortunate that we, we would determine that. But yeah, we've put a minimum payment because the board didn't want to be married into this deal for a long time, so they wanted a three-year payout. So that's, I think that's.
So they, they're the ones who technically own the property.
They, Type A owns the property, correct. And they approved that. And they have approved it, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Entertaining a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve this agreement.
I'll say it. Got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Robert Burnham, to approve the chapter three-eighty economic development agreements between the city of Joshua and Rumville Properties regarding use of the property owned by the Type A Economic Development Corporation located at Twelfth and Beach. Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion, jury, seven zero. Next is to discuss considering a possible action on authorizing a one-time payment to employees for special duty compensation. Uh, related to the COVID nineteen response. And I was, want to say something first, and I'll let Mike do it. Uh, as most of you are aware, this is it. Our little city office is quite large. We probably had, what, seventy-five percent? Fifty to seventy-five percent of the people that come down with COVID. Well, our deal is as soon as you show them the signs, you're out of here. And so what the result is, is we've had everybody's been having to cover other positions, and I think we've done it quite adequately. Uh, we haven't really had any issues with anybody in the city. Police departments having to deal with it. They've got quite a few officers out. Uh, our water clerk was out for a while. Everybody chipped in and helped take care of that. Carla, the, uh, courts officer was out. Everybody chipped in and helped that. We got the COVID funds, uh, which was, what, three hundred and something thousand dollars to sort of pay for things like this. But Mike's actually worked on the budget, and with the fact that we're down some personnel in each department. We're going to cover this out of the existing budget. We're not taking any of the funds out of the COVID. Uh, we're not taking any additional, uh, funds out of any budget. Well, we're going to move some of the budget items around, but it's not like we're going out and spending any extra money. And I think the way he's kind of set up, it's going to be like a thousand dollars for first responders, which would be primarily the police department. Uh, what is it, five hundred, seven fifty for some of the others.
Administration. It's the, the, the frontline guys is what we looked at. Fire department, police department, um, the guys that are, you know, out there day to day. And it also includes a couple of other people, um, that interact with them on a regular basis. And then, uh, administration, inspection folks, code enforcement people. Uh, it would pay seven fifty and then part-time, we only have a couple of part-time positions. Uh, but they both have interaction with people. Uh, and that would pay five hundred. And the reason we're doing this is, is what the mayor said, or I said, doing, requesting. If the person that went home today tests positive, it'll put us at seventy-three percent of the. If the person that went home today tests positive, it'll put us at seventy-three percent of the staff has either been quarantined or been sick. Most have been sick. One of them was homesick along with a fourteen-year-old boy, and her husband was in the hospital for over a week. And it's, it's costing them some out-of-pocket expenses. Because so far, none of this, nobody has filed work, workers comp. Because there's not really any way to, to tie this back to that. And the, the fourteen days off they're getting, because we're required to give them that time off, if they haven't, so that they're quarantined. That's, that's mandated. This is going to help kind of ease some of those. The test is free to get, but the treatment, the medication, the, the things like that to that. Some have had to put their kids in daycare because they couldn't stay home with them. There's been an out-of-pocket cost to them, and this, we're trying to do to help kind of absorb some of that. We do have COVID funding that will cover it, but because of unfilled positions and mainly that, then the effect on the budget, if we didn't transfer our COVID funds and we just use what's budgeted now, the, the effect on the budget is going to be a net negative, it's going to be neutral. There's funds that, that will cover it, so we're not, I don't think, I don't think we're going to need to come back and move COVID funds at the end of the year. But they're there if we did.
I didn't hear you mention anything about council members.
Well.
Did you just leave that part off?
You are the council, so if you want to allocate some money for yourself, if you want to take that.
No, I'm trying to let you make that motion.
At least technically, not a council member.
That's right.
His terms expire, and he hasn't been sworn back in.
I didn't hear any of that conversation.
I'm a vote for it.
You, 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 you mentioned the way it's filed for, for workers comp, and e- even if they did, it probably wouldn't be. The fourteen days that they're mandated to be off, is that paid or unpaid?
It, it's paid, if it's Monday through Friday, their, their work schedules are covered for them sometimes.
Okay.
So they're not losing pay, they're not having to take their own sick time, but we're obligated to pay for that.
Does that affect their, their benefits of drawing sick time, vacation time, anything like that?
Above and beyond.
Okay. Okay, that's one to do.
And, and we, I mean, we haven't had anybody, we've had one that's been exposed twice, but he's tested negative both times. But, but we have had, I'd say, I think there's, all but three have actually been sick. And the one that went home today was symptomatic, so I expect that, that number to increase by one. Nobody has been hospitalized, other than the one person's husband, but, because it's part, none of your people are hospitalized on this side.
I had two within the emergency room, reading, all of them.
Okay, yeah, I didn't think anybody had been admitted. But it's, it, it's kind of gotten to be a burden on some of them. Some, we've had some that have requested to sell back some vacation time to cover some of the stuff, because it's deductible. It doesn't pay anything until sixty-nine hundred dollars, and so a lot of this is just out of pocket. So we were trying to put this together to kind of ease that burden. They show up to work every day, nobody's refused to come in when we've needed them. And they're, we're not letting people back in the back part of the building, but they are coming in the front. And, you know, we're, we're trying to keep it down, but it's, you know, it's just tough, it's, it's easy to catch the same. This is just the way to help, help ease that burden a little bit.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Have all of our first responders had the opportunity to be vaccinated?
All that have wanted to be vaccinated have been vaccinated. Your feet. Yeah, we, between Burleson and Cleveland, Burleson's been extremely helpful to us, getting people in, and so has Cleveland. So we, we don't do it here, but they took care of that.
What about the fire department?
Everybody this long as you've been has been.
Good.
All right, if you have any questions, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion, and we approve. Got a motion by Robert Fleming, signed by Angela Nichols, to approve authorizing a one-time payment to employees for special duty compensation related to the COVID nineteen response. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Now we'll go back, and we're going to have a presentation of certificate of election administered in the open office, Mr. Mike Kidd.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, but is it possible to do this after the executive session? I grabbed the incorrect certificate of election, so I have to correct.
I got the executive session, then.
He is still not an official, so it's a sworn in. I'm so sorry.
All right, now we have staff reports, does anybody have any questions on staff reports? I got one question, Paul, that chief, are we required, is chief? Fire chief, are we required to respond to fire, to every medical call? Where's our ESD contract, yes? Anybody else have any questions on any of the staff reports? All right, if not, we're going to adjourn.
Just, right, right, right before you do, Mr. Mayor, just a personal note. I would like to thank the, the city staff, you and the council members for the thoughtful arrangement that you sent to my mother-in-law's funeral when she passed away. It was really greatly appreciated by the family.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
They, I wanted to make everybody aware, it came back up again today, the fire department, it's been a couple of months ago, and I believe it was a drowning. It turned out to be near drowning, they resuscitated the drowning victim, brought that person back, and that person left the hospital and went home. They're going to be recognized in the next few weeks for that by the Chisholm Trail one hundred club. I'll try and let y'all all know when that happens, but they, they did take somebody that wasn't doing well and, and, I mean, brought that, brought him back from death, quite frankly, and so they'll be recognized for that in the next few weeks when we get it all arranged.
We're going to do that here too, or?
It's probably going to be at the fire station, because we can get more people in there, but it, it will be in Joshua. But I'll, I'll let y'all know that date, so y'all can be there.
Awesome.
Good job, chief.
Good job.
All right, we're going to adjourn into executive session. Pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one point, subchapter D, Texas Government Code, discussing the following. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven four, liberate regarding the appointment, employment, and evaluation of public office, officer, or employee with city secretary and city manager.
Are we going to go in there most times?
We've been going there, okay.
Thank you all for showing up.
Ready to go? All right, we're out of the executive session. Mr. Kimball, would you like to make a motion concerning the city manager?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the contract and enter into it with Mike Peacock as our new city manager.
Discussion, all of those in favor? Got a motion by Scott Kimball, second by Robert Burnham, to allow the mayor to sign the convoy contract with city manager Mike Peacock. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. You have another motion concerning the city secretary?
Yes, sir, I move that, that we approve and go forth with the items we discussed concerning the city secretary.
Have a second? Got a motion by Scott Kimball, second by Rick Priest, to approve what we talked about regarding the city secretary. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. We're adjourned, no, no, we got to square in mic. I'm ready to go, huh?
You got time, you got time. Terry, I didn't say anything incriminating, you heard, did I?
Not at all, not at all.
Thank you.
I want to let you know you're being, you're still being recorded.
I, I, I appreciate that.
There you go. Now the hard part comes. You just like Joe, but.
Oh, what an insult. Oh, man. What an insult.
I'll tell you what.
Joe didn't deserve that.
I take your in.
I might.
Do solemn swear or affirm?
Sow and swear or affirm.
Now with faithful execute the duties.
With faithful execute the duties.
Of the office of city council, place two.
Of the office of city council, place two.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And at this state.
And at this state.
So help me God.
All right, without further business, we adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Hi, Terry, nice to meet you.
Bye, Terry.